Welcome to the Greenville City Council Candidate Forums. This forum is a joint production of Interbank's Media and the Daily Reflector. Please watch and listen to the candidates as they discuss issues pertinent to voters in the city of Greenville. Here is your host for this Greenville Candidate Forum, Bobby Burns, executive editor of the Daily Reflector.
Hello, and welcome to the Greenville City Council Forum, brought to you by the Daily Reflector and Interbank's Media. This session features the candidates for District Three on the council, Marion Blackburn, Seth Hardy, and Tim Langley. Only registered voters in District Three can vote in this election. This session is scheduled for about 45 minutes. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to answer questions, and we will alternate which candidate answers first. Candidates will have a one-minute opening statement and up to two minutes to close. I will be asking the questions, and my colleague, Mary Doring, will be keeping time. We drew lots to determine the order in which candidates will speak, and with that, I want to thank all of the candidates for their participation, and we'll start off with an opening statement for Mr. Hardy.
I want to say thank you to the Daily Reflector and IBX for hosting this forum, and to my fellow candidates for joining in this important discussion. My name is Seth Hardy. I'm an ECU Honors College student, majoring in Construction Management. I'm also a lifelong resident of Greenville with family roots here for the past 182 years, and I'm also a candidate that's committed to being a voice for all. My platform is built on common sense, leadership, and the need to ensure that one of Greenville's largest stakeholders, our students, have a seat at the table at city decision makings. If elected, I will focus on lowering our tax rate, encouraging smart development, improving community safety, and updating outdated ordinances that hold our city back. For the first time, District Three has the opportunity to elect someone who holistically represents both students and residents, because I proudly fit both categories. This is a pivotal election for Greenville. At a time when we are paying more in taxes than ever before, we must ensure that our city's future is placed in good hands. Together, we can ensure that Greenville remains a community that thrives for everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Blackburn?
Good evening. I'm Marion Blackburn. I am the District Three City Council Representative for Greenville. I'm delighted to be here tonight. I would like to start also by thanking our hosts, Interbank's Media, as well as the Daily Reflector, for organizing and moderating this conversation. So, and if you're watching, thanks for watching. Here's a little bit about myself. I was born on a naval base and then moved to Edgcombe County, where I grew up on a tobacco farm, which was a very special experience. From there, I went to UNC Chapel Hill, where I got my undergraduate degree, and I have a master in public administration from ECU with a focus in policy. And within that context, here are my four policy goals for the next two years. I want to make sure that we focus on safety, and safety in a holistic way. That includes safety for all of our community's residents, transforming infrastructure. Third is welcoming and inviting economic development, both from within the nation and from around the world. And then number four, making sure Greenville stays a fun and beautiful place to live.
Mr. Langley?
Yes, my name is Tim Langley. I'm honored to be a lifelong resident here in this community, and I too want to thank Interbank's studios for hosting this candidate forum. My family's been part of three generations, and I've lived in Greenville all my life, 58 years. Born in Old Pitt County Memorial Hospital. Been in public service now for 36 years. What I'll be bringing to the table is common sense and ethical decision-making, and I will also be bringing to the platform all the experience I have in working in public service. I will be a leader for all, and I hope that I have your vote on November the 4th.
Thank you. So the first question comes to you, Mr. Hardy. The council is routinely asked to balance demands for residential and commercial growth with concerns such as traffic, noise, and congestion. What is your approach to managing the city's growth?
So, I'm 100% pro-development, but I'm also proactive-minded when it comes to upgrading our infrastructure, like roads and utilities. A perfect example is developments along Fire Tower Road, and it presents a lack of forward-thinking with the previous councils with infrastructure, specifically roads. We will not be able to support the increased growth without looking forward to improving our infrastructure. I want to adopt a forward-thinking mindset, because it's important specifically for keeping ECU graduates here in Greenville. And a perfect example is, I remember being 12-years-old, sitting through many of those cycles of lights at Fire Tower and Evans intersection. So that has been a need that has been around for many years, and now it is just a discussion to expand both of those roadways. And I think with more forward-thinking, we can lessen the burden on these thoroughfares when we do look forward to expanding them. Thank you.
Ms. Blackburn, would you like me to repeat the question?
Sure, that'd be fantastic.
The council is routinely asked to balance demands for residential and commercial growth with concerns such as traffic, noise, and congestion. What is your approach to managing the city's growth?
So, thank you. This is a very complex question. It's a very important question. If you've seen our work on the city council, you know that it's often something that comes to heated discussions amongst our council. We are very grateful to be a thriving community, where we have development and growth in every corner, and we want to continue that. At the same time, we absolutely have to look at our infrastructure. We have not been able to keep up our infrastructure with our growth. In a way, that's a good thing, because we're growing faster than we expected. On the other hand, we have some real important issues that have got to be solved because of all this growth. And specifically, one of the areas in District Three that I'm always talking about and trying to get state help on is 10th Street East. This is a state highway, so we cannot, as the city, make local improvements there. Yet, at the same time, we've got explosive growth on that corridor. 10th Street East was initially intended as a thoroughfare, not as a commercial corridor. It is, in fact, though, becoming more like a Greenville Boulevard. What needs to happen there? We need more stoplights. We need safety modifications. We need medians, and we need a change in the speed limit. Until recently, the speed limit was 50 miles an hour. We did successfully reduce the speed limit to 45. I think we need to head even slower, because that area is very congested. There's lots of curb cuts. There's people making left turns, and it's just a very dangerous situation. So I use that as an example of where we need to focus on infrastructure and improvements. And I think it's important to add that it's not just about improving infrastructure for cars and traffic and citizens of our community. It's also disadvantageous for businesses to have a congested area where people can't get to their business safely and without a lot of stress. So we need to be very circumspect about how we grow. We need to grow in the right ways, in the right areas.
Thank you. Mr. Langley, the council is asked to balance demands for residential and commercial growth with concerns such as traffic, noise, and congestion. What is your approach to managing the city's growth?
Well, first, I'm just going to say that, you know, I'm not a politician, but you don't have to be a politician to realize that we have an absolute disaster when it comes to safety. Back in 2015, I saw a candidate forum featuring Michael Oberton, and he was discussing traffic back then. And then I have a first cousin, who was a police officer here at Greenville, and he was discussing traffic in the early 80s. So I come to the platform with an idea that I believe I would love to see as far as infrastructure with traffic. I'd like to bring out what is called a Greenville Traffic and Mobility Summit. Greenville Traffic and Mobility Summit. And what that would do is that we would certainly bring in our experts, the city of Greenville, traffic engineers, but we would bring in top traffic engineers from all over the country within this summit to bring their expertise, because I'm sure in larger cities, they've seen issues such as what we have here in Greenville. So with that Greenville Traffic and Mobility Summit, I would focus on the Ts. And that is technology. We need more signal syncing. We need our traffic lights talking to us, and we also need traffic and access on that. Targeted projects. Within that Greenville Traffic Summit, we would actually bring about some ideas and situations that, in real-life situations, where we would be able to bring traffic situations under control in this city. It is time for change, and the time is now.
Thank you. Let's see, question two, this comes to you, Ms. Blackburn. North Carolina is experiencing a boom in data center development as the use of artificial intelligence grows. Should the city change its regulations to promote more of this type of development? Why or why not?
Again, thank you for that question. It's a good question. It's a complex question. As a matter of fact, the reason that I decided to run for city council in 2022 was because of the, at that time, cryptocurrency mining operation that was headed to Greenville, which was a grave concern to me. Fortunately, that did not happen, but it forced us to look at cryptocurrency mining. I still believe that cryptocurrency mining is not a good enterprise to have in our city because of the amount of energy it uses. It could potentially double the amount of energy used, roughly adding the city of Wilson to our utilities infrastructure. Not only that, but it just doesn't bring the jobs, maybe six jobs, and it can create a lot of noise and a lot of disturbance for people who are around it. So cryptocurrency mining is definitely not an area that I think Greenville should have come and invest. Now, data centers are slightly different, and I think when we're looking at data centers, we have to look carefully at what is the economic investment going to be, and who does it benefit? Specifically, if the utility structure, if the utility infrastructure needs to be expanded, who's going to pay for that? Because often what's happening with these data centers is that the people are asked to fund, to capitalize the expansion in the utilities infrastructure for these data centers. Now, without a clear benefit to the people of Greenville and the people who are funding these infrastructure improvements, I don't think that's a good way for us to go. I also believe that we need to listen to the community. Again, the community spoke out loudly and clearly that they did not want cryptocurrency mining in the city of Greenville. The previous city council did not listen, and I think that is something that we need to take, that we need to make first and foremost, is listen to the people when these types of operations come to town and listen to what they want. I think it's an important, sort of a final point, that artificial intelligence uses a tremendous amount of water, so we have to look carefully at all these considerations when it comes to these types of centers.
Thank you, Mr. Langley. Same question to you. North Carolina is experiencing a boom in the development, in data center development as the use of artificial intelligence grows. Should the city change its regulations to promote this type of development? Why or why not?
Well, I believe it should, contrary to what Marion Blackburn states. Data centers are a good thing, but they made the rules and regulations so restrictive that, and it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of systems to cool those data mining centers, because, you know, they're more or less considered energy hogs to a certain degree. However, at the same time, within the data center mining also, is that they made it so tight, I'm talking about the city council made it so tight, that those air conditions could only operate within as if I was whispering to you. And there is no system that I know that you could create to make that kind of system be that quiet. So basically, Marion got on television and stated that it was basically for safety. But data center, what she did, that data center, not just that one, but other data centers have went to the foothills of North Carolina and taken away from Greenville $1.9 billion in revenue. The good thing about data centers, because the good thing about data centers is that they supply their own energy. They would supplement GUC, whatever power they needed. So if GUC has got two power grids, they could supply them a four, because they got plenty of money. And also contrary to that, data centers do bring jobs here, and they would have brought jobs here for IT. And that's what we always talk about, we want to sustain jobs here and bring our students and make them stay here. That's a good way of doing that. So data mining is a good thing if they're properly placed. Don't regulate them to death, because we saw an opportunity where Apple-
That's time, Mr. Langley. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Hardy, North Carolina is experiencing a boom in data center development as the use of artificial intelligence grows. Should the city change its regulations to promote more of this type of development? Why or why not?
So obviously, there's pros and cons to these data centers. They can provide jobs. They expand the tax base. Then some of the cons are they bleed utility and infrastructure resources. But I think it's important to engage with the city staff and employees to determine if data center zoning is healthy for our community in utility and infrastructure resources. And if it's not, then obviously I would not support it. And then if it's not a viable option for our community at this point, maybe that's a sign that we need to look ahead to upgrading and invest into our infrastructure and development.
Thank you. Okay, question three goes to you, Mr. Langley.
Sir?
A new state law passed this week, or went into effect this week anyway, greatly limits the ability of cities to regulate the size of U.S. and North Carolina flags, and it nullifies steps Greenville has taken to enforce flag rules violated by Camping World. What is your reaction to the state's action, and what is your takeaway from this entire Camping World episode?
Well, if you look at the scales of justice, and me being unlawful, as I retired just last year, there was more people that was for the Camping World situation than there was against it. However, I want to make this plain and very statesman, if I can. Marcus Amonis was not innocent in all this. However, that would have been a different way of approaching this. As soon as the city council realized that this was going to be a national problem, they shouldn't have did a knee-jerk reaction, but they did. The owner of this studio sent letters to all the council members. Almost had an agreement worked out with LaMarcus Amonis, and of course, none of them responded back. And if they did, of course, it didn't solve the situation. I think there would have been a better way, because our flag is the greatest symbol of freedom that this world has ever known. And I simply believe that common sense should have prevailed in this situation, no matter what side of the aisle you are on this flag issue. Now, the city council's got egg on their face, and the city taxpayers, you, are going to have to pay that $40,000 in legal fees. It should have never, she had a chance to amend the ordinance or make a variance, and that's why we do this council. We make changes. Why couldn't a change been made in this situation? Thank you.
Mr. Hardy, a new state law that went into effect this week greatly limits the ability of cities to regulate the size of U.S. and North Carolina flags, and it nullifies steps Greenville has taken to enforce flag rules violated by Camping World. What is your reaction to the state action, and what is your takeaway from the entire Camping World episode?
Obviously, there's a lot of strong feelings surrounding the American flag. I believe the council's attitude and reaction to the situation led to a bleeding of public resources and dollars through the lawsuit. And there have been many other examples throughout the country where other municipalities have sued Camping World in similar ways. But I think that the council should have brought Camping World to the table and found some sort of amicable solution where either the ordinance was amended, fines were paid, whether in full or partially. But obviously, the House Bill 926 is going into effect soon, which would render all of Greenville's fines and lawsuit invalid. The civil penalties that are now invalid and unenforceable to the tune of $37,500 as of 926, and then around $27,000 in legal fees for outside council. So I believe that the current council made the wrong decision in suing Camping World, and I believe that there were better and more cost-effective solutions for the citizens of Greenville.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. A new state law greatly limits the ability of cities to regulate the size of U.S. and North Carolina flags, and it nullifies steps Greenville has taken to enforce flag rules violated by Camping World. What is your reaction to the state action, and what is your takeaway from the entire Camping World episode?
Thank you. Yes, this has been a very, sort of a difficult conversation for our community, but that has always been my priority, is letting our community have this conversation. And I heard from so many people in the community, and whether you find the flag, this large flag, beautiful or distracting, it's important, and what I heard from the community that they said is important, is that it comes down to the rule of law. Our city has ordinances for commercial displays, and ordinances like these are essential if you've got 100,000 people living in a small area. If you just have any kind of commercial display anywhere, it's not only distracting, but it's unsafe. So that's sort of the root of the issue. Either we follow the law or we don't. The other essential element there is we have other businesses throughout our community that follow this law without complaint, and I could not, as a council member, say to all of those businesses, "Thank you very much for following the law, but we're going to let this other business do what they want to do." I could not do that. And what I heard from the community loudly and clearly is, "Please stand up for our ordinances." Thank you for standing up for our ordinances. So just to the point that's been made about trying to sit down at a table with this business, Camping World, they falsified, this company falsified their building permit application. They said that they were going to put up a flag that was 216 square feet and a pole, 70 feet tall, which is within our ordinances. Then they put up a flag that was just tremendously beyond that, almost the size of a basketball court, which you can't say is sort of a variance. At that point, it's really just a sort of a blatant disregard for our ordinances. We tried to work with them. It just was not ever possible to get us, to have that conversation. And then finally, I just want to say that this flagpole has not been inspected. We don't know about the safety of it, and so that continues to be a concern.
No, no, thank you. We're not doing that. No, we're just going to answer the questions. No, no, sir. Please, no, sir. Please, no, sir. Please, no, sir. Please. Mr. Langley? Mr. Langley? Mr. Langley? That's not the object of this forum. The object of this forum is to answer questions. Mr. Langley, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask another question. Mr. Langley, I'm going to ask another question. Mr. Langley, please. I'm going to ask another question. This goes to Mr. Hardy. The city council has maintained a property tax rate of 39.54 cents, the lowest in 20 years, while adding services such as police and firefighting positions. Some argue that the rate could have been lowered even more to the revenue-neutral rate of 36.85 cents. What is your position on setting the tax rate going forward?
So obviously, we want to get the tax rate to at revenue-neutral or as close to revenue-neutral as possible, and we want to do this to stop the increase in rent prices for college students and residents, as well as keeping the property taxes down for landowners in Greenville. I believe that if we take the tax rate down to revenue-neutral, we could subsidize this loss in tax revenue by aggressively pursuing state and federal infrastructure grants. And I believe Greenville doesn't have a revenue problem. It has an opportunity and development problem. We need to increase the tax base rather than increasing the rate on the current population currently in Greenville. Perfect example is the megasite that the county commissioners and city council approved outside of the city limits. It will be utilizing city resources such as utilities, and we're losing out on a massive tax base, but we need to look forward, think forward, and develop these areas, residential areas, for when the jobs and people come to Greenville to fill these jobs. We have a spot where we can increase the tax base in that way.
Ms. Blackburn, same question. The city council maintained a city property tax rate of 39.5 cents the last budget session, the lowest in 20 years, while adding services such as police and firefighting positions. Some have argued that the rate could be lowered to the revenue-neutral rate even of 36.85 cents. What is your position on setting the rate going forward?
Thank you for that question, and I appreciate what was said about trying to keep rents affordable. And if we have that affordable housing question, I certainly want to talk about that at that time. But I think when we talk about the revaluation, sort of the starting point for that conversation is that property has a different value now, and that's good news. If you own a home, in some cases, your home has doubled in value. That's your equity. What does that say? That says that our community is thriving and doing excellent, and so that is the good news. Now, where it becomes difficult is if my home went from being a certain value to being double that value, I owe more taxes on it. So that's where the pinch comes. And when we looked at those numbers, what we decided was, we did not, we were not going to keep the tax rate the same, because that would be a burden on our citizens. We dropped the tax rate more than 10 cents. We did keep a small amount of that revaluation, 2.69 cents of it. Why did we do that? We kept a little bit of that revaluation in order to expand our police force by eight officers, expand our fire and rescue staff by 12, and going to continue to expand that every year. We also have now set aside $1 million in additional funding for our roads. I hear an awful lot about, "Please fix my road." We also have an additional $1 million for sidewalk improvements, and we're going to make ADA improvements with that. So we kept a small amount of that revaluation, but it is going to very good use. Sort of as an additional note there, it's important to note that construction costs have tripled in some cases. We have a pipe at our Public Works building that was estimated to cost $3 million to replace. It has ended up costing $10 million. We absolutely cannot watch our city crumble around us, because we're not funding our infrastructure repairs and improvements. And we decided as a council that having that tax rate was the way to balance the needs of our community without being a burden on our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Langley. The city council maintained a property tax rate of 39.54 cents, the lowest in 20 years in the last budget sessions, while adding services such as police and firefighting positions. Some have argued that the rate could have been set at a lower revenue-neutral rate of 36.85 cents. What is your position on setting the tax rate going forward?
I agree with a revenue-neutral tax, and let me make it clear to the people watching. Pitt County determines your property values. City council determines the tax rate, and they indeed increased it to 2.69%, which is above the revenue-neutral tax rate. That was approved on June 13, 2024. But let me tell you what happened on June 10. That was public comment period. There was a gentleman that came up there, is the owner of University condominiums, and he stated that it was a bait-and-switch, smoke-and-mira situation. I understand his frustrations, and I understand what Ms. Blackburn just said about causing rates on lumber and things of that sort. But the mayor of this city, on the night that this was approved, I'm sorry, I apologize, on June 10, made a statement to Ms. Portia Willis that he was willing to go through the entire budget to reduce this down so we could keep it at a revenue-neutral situation. And none of the council approved that. On the night that this tax rate, the budget was approved, Marion Blackburn had no questions. She made a motion for the entire situation to be approved. I myself will keep it a revenue-neutral, and I'm not sure if I'm even going to raise any taxes. My job is to- My job is to reduce taxes, and that's exactly what I'm going to do. I'm going to be laser-focused on that budget. And when it comes to a $483 million budget, then we're going to see if we can work to make that lower. Thank you.
Thank you. Question five. It goes to you, Ms. Blackburn. Greenville's new police chief says that the most complaints the department receives are about traffic violations and muffler noise. And he says it's doing, it's working very hard to respond to those complaints. Do you believe that that is an appropriate place for the police department to focus its energy? And how else should the city focus its public safety resources?
That is actually an issue that I have probably heard more about than any other issue, is the mufflers. And what happens is that even though it seems, when you look at the full context of what we do as a city, it's not a life-or-death issue. But for many people, it causes them a lot of stress and grief. I represent the Cypress Glen neighborhood, and for folks who've moved here from across the country to find a peace and an enjoyable setting for their final, you know, their last years. And they say, you know, "We can't sit out on a porch. We hear it from inside our homes." So I think it's important to take that seriously. Now, what we have to do every day, though, as a city council and as a city, is we have to do it all. We have to look at life and death concerns, and we have to look at quality-of-life concerns. And the mufflers, the loud or the modified mufflers fall into a quality-of-life concern. Now, it's important to note that modified mufflers are illegal in the state of North Carolina, so it really becomes an enforcement issue. But again, as the question stated, do we want to tell our police officers, "This is your focus"? I think what we have to do is strike a balance. It has been said, I'm not an expert, but it has been said that often these are associated with speeding cars. So if you can address speeding, you can sometimes address the modified mufflers as well. I think that when it comes to quality of life, we have to look at the best way to have the best quality of life in our community, and we need to hear our residents, hear our citizens when they say something is truly a problem for them and causing them stress, and really potentially causing them to not want to live here. If we do not have a good quality of life and a welcoming community, we cannot expect to continue to have the thriving global investment and the new people that are coming here. We have to assure them a good quality of life, as well as a safe city. We have to do it all.
Mr. Langley, the question comes to you now. Greenville Police, Greenville's new police chief says that the most complaints the department receives are about traffic violations and muffler noise. And he says the department is working very hard to address those complaints. Do you believe that that is an appropriate place to focus, and how else should the city focus its public safety resources?
I think that's, that is an area for, you know, the police department to work on. And I know that Chief Tindall is doing all he can for it. And Marion is correct, and I agree with her on that approach. Often, when I was a law enforcement officer full-time, I would make those type stops a lot of times on East 10th Street. And sometimes you would unfortunately find contraband within those vehicles. So you're, you know, you're hitting two birds with one stone when you stop these type situations. Our neighborhoods, as Ms. Blackburn just stated, it's our home. It's where we live. And I myself not live too far from East 10th Street, just a block away. And it seems that they'll get in that little gully in front of my home where it is not much like, and they'll kick that accelerator, and then there we go. We've got loud mufflers waking us up. How do I know? Because it wakes me up. So indeed, that is not the only place that law enforcement should be focusing on. But certainly, traffic and modified mufflers and things of that sort is a contentious concern for the people. And I've heard that knocking on hundreds of doors is, "Mr. Langley, can you help us and work with the chief of police to reduce this?" And I said, "I certainly would and will." Thank you.
Thank you. Same question to you, Mr. Hardy. Greenville's new police chief says that the most complaints the department receives are ones about traffic violations and muffler noise.
I think she's got an issue with that.
We good?
Yep.
Okay. Greenville's new police chief says that the most complaints the department receives are about traffic violations and muffler noise, and that it's working very hard to respond to those complaints. Do you believe that that is an appropriate place for the department to focus its efforts, and how else should the city focus its public safety resources?
So I'm pretty familiar with this issue. I live right off First Street, which runs right behind Cypress Glen. So I often hear a lot of these loud vehicles flying down First Street. And I do think that it is an important issue, because if it bothers me, I could see how it bothers the residents of that community. But I think that I have the unique opportunity to represent both students and residents, and I think that I'll be able to bridge that gap and inform these students and younger people that, about this noise issue, and that it does bother people and why it bothers them. Another thing is safety downtown. I've been talking to a lot of students the past few weeks, and one of the things that they say is that they would like to see more officers downtown. Now, I believe that there's a deficit of officers at the Greenville Police Department. So I think we need to continue to invest into our police department and get our officer numbers up so that we can adequately staff the downtown area as well as the rest of the city.
Thank you. This is question six, and it goes to Mr. Langley. The city has taken a number of steps in recent years to increase its affordable housing stock, including most recently investing city funds in a community partnership to build 50 single-family homes in 10 years. What challenges remain in promoting affordable housing, and to what degree should the city and its tax dollars be involved?
I think every American, even, every American should have the opportunity at, or at least a shot at homeowners, at being a homeowner. And I'm a homeowner twice because I lost my home, my first home when we got married to Hurricane Floyd, and then we had to build just a little higher up on East 10th Street. The city of Greenville, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Blackburn, the 50 and 10 housing situation, I think that's an excellent idea. 50 homes is a great start. And I know that the city is using federal grants, assistance from Pitt Community College and other areas to bring about this, I say dream, dream for many people. And so I don't have any issues with this whatsoever. However, I will caution, and I would caution city leaders, that at any time, we're in a government shutdown right now. And federal grants and things like that come and go, I'm sorry, comes and goes. So this affordable housing situation is an important part of our community. And I would just commend what's been done so far on that. But I would like to take this even further if I get the opportunity to sit on council. I would love to be there when the homeowner turns the key. Again, this is about affordable housing. This is about getting homeless people off the streets, because everyone needs to feel deserved and loved and cared for. And I promise you, if I'm on there, I will do that.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. The city has taken a number of steps in recent years to increase its affordable housing stock, including most recently investing city funds in a community partnership to build 50 single-family homes in 10 years. What challenges remain in promoting affordable housing, and to what degree should the city and its tax dollars be involved?
So I think the way that you promote and ensure affordable housing is lower the property tax rate. That is how you make housing affordable. Situations that I'm familiar with, the student area, the grid, many students have seen their rent increase $50 to $50, even as high as $100, making it extremely unaffordable for a college budget. And I'm sure that is true throughout, for other residents throughout the city. I've met with many landlords as well who want to keep their housing affordable, to be, to stay competitive and make sure that their properties are leased out every year. But the current council has forced their hand in raising their rent due to the property tax increase of 25%.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. The city has taken a number of steps in recent years to increase the affordable housing stock, including most recently investing city funds in a community partnership to build 50 single-family homes in 10 years. What challenges remain in promoting affordable housing, and to what degree should the city and its tax dollars be involved?
Housing, safe affordable housing, is part of what I call holistic safety, which also includes access to health care and access to economic security. And we absolutely cannot talk about affordable housing and rental housing without considering probably our largest group of renters, which are our students. And it's very important that our students have access to affordable, safe housing. I have worked with a lot of students in the past few years who come to me when they have concerns about where they're living. I help them by sort of pointing them in the right direction if they have a complaint or a concern. I've also helped them with some of the resources that the city has. So when we talk about housing and when we talk about affordable housing, this is something that affects students directly and something that I've been very engaged with, with students. I also would like to say that the city has, in addition to the 50 and 10 program, which I'll talk a little bit about too, the city has been very ambitious in working with developers in providing the tax incentives through what's called the Lytech program. The Lytech program means that you get tax benefits, but for developers. And often, it's that missing piece that allows them to build a project and set the rent at, you know, potentially below market value or below what they would have to otherwise. In other words, this is a program that uses those tax credits in order to build truly affordable apartments for renters. And we need to continue doing that. We need to do as much of that as we can. Last, I would like to mention the 50 and 10 program. What a great program that is. I'm so happy that we have adopted that. This is going to allow people who customarily might not be able to afford a home, to own their own home. We allow, that is made possible through combinations of down payment assistance, as well as low-interest loans that are going to allow people their chance to have their own home. We're going to try to build 50 homes in the next 10 years. It's very exciting.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. You know what? I think I did manage to mess up the order at some point. I'm sorry about that. We'll get it straight now. So we're going to start with a close with Mr. Langley. You have two minutes, Mr. Langley.
Oh, closing?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'd like to thank IBX again for hosting this wonderful candidate forum. I did get a little upset about the flag issue, I think, because it's been looming with us for so much, so long within the community. And there was a situation where I felt that more could have been done. But that's another topic for another time. We'll look at you right here. 36 years in public service work, 36 years working in humane law enforcement and also regular law enforcement. And one thing that I know is people. That's all I've ever been around. My entire adult life has been working with people. And I look for the opportunity to sit on city council and get a chance to be laser-focused on that budget, because I know there's other places that we can reduce those influxes in our budget. There was two, there was two, I guess, positions that were approved in the 23, 24, 25 budget. That was the sustainability coordinator and both, and the community engagement manager. Those positions are $95,000-plus benefits. I do not believe that we needed them at that particular time. There was only one dissent on city council. But again, looking at you face-to-face, if you vote for Tim Langley, and although I'm not a politician, I still believe that I'll do the very best that I can for the citizens of Greenville. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Langley. Ms. Blackburn, it comes to you now.
Again, I'm Marion Blackburn. I am the District 3 City Council Representative for Greenville. Delighted to be here tonight. Again, I'd like to thank Interbank's Media for hosting. I'd like to thank the Daily Reflector for moderating and organizing. And I'd like to thank my fellow candidates for being here tonight. And would like to ask, if you're watching this, which I hope you've enjoyed these responses, I would like to ask for your vote. We've done some great work in the last two years, and it's work that I really want to see through to the finish line. Among that work is my focus on four things. One is safety, holistic safety, which certainly means safety from bodily harm, safety from property crimes, but it also means safe streets. If you're a student at ECU, you should be able to cross the street safely and not worry about getting hit by a car. If you're trying to cross the street on East 10th Street, well, you can't really cross the street there. We need to make our streets safer for pedestrians. We need to add those ADA improvements. We need to watch our traffic and our speeds and make sure our traffic has a safe flow. It also means safety of your personal expression and safety in a holistic way. Second key priority is going to be our economic development. We have had Boviet Solar come to Greenville. What a great business that is to have in our community. $300 million in investment, 1,000 jobs. It's their first North American location. It's a green economy. We need to continue to welcome and invite businesses like that who are truly transforming our community. NEPRO is also expanding, and that's great news. Third, we need to transform our infrastructure. We have some very old infrastructure. We need to improve it. We've got some really good-looking streets downtown now, thanks to the $48 million Build Grant. We need to continue that throughout our community. And then last, we need to make sure Greenville stays a beautiful, fun place to live, a place where people want to come and live. And I just want to mention that if you haven't seen the Wildflower Field at East Side Park, it is absolutely stunning. It's the kind of attraction that is so distinctive to Greenville. We need to keep doing those kinds of attractions. We need to keep our public art, our murals, and make sure people want to live here. Thank you.
Mr. Hardy, you get the final word.
So I have the, like I said in my opening statements, I have the unique opportunity to represent both students and residents. Something that I've had the opportunity to see with students is, ECU does a great job of bringing in high-caliber talent here to Greenville, but the city kind of falls flat on the back end of the deal by keeping its students here in Greenville. So something that we need to improve on as a city is making Greenville a more attractive place for students to stay once they graduate. And that starts with lowering taxes and keeping Greenville affordable. We need to create new outlets of entertainment for students, like the amphitheater at the Town Commons area. We need to work to bring in artists, that, quality artists, to provide that outlet for young people. And then roads on the grid are another thing. So students come from all over the place, and when their parents come to visit them at this school and this city, obviously, ECU has a beautiful campus. And then when they go to see where their kid lives, the roads are in haphazard condition, terrible. The lighting quality is poor. So we really need to invest into the people that make Greenville Greenville, and that's its students. So please join me on November 4 and coming together with students and residents and making a change for all.
Thank you. This concludes our forum with the candidates for the District 3 seat on the Greenville City Council. Thank you again to Marion Blackburn, Seth Hardy, and Tim Langley for your participation. To our audience, thank you for watching. Today's questions are ripped from the headlines of the Daily Reflector, so please keep reading and stay informed. Remember, early voting runs October 16 through November 1, and Election Day is on November 4. Thank you.